Yeah.
Maybe he doesn't know.
We're on.
Oh, yeah.
We must be on. We're hearing ourselves, so we must go. Welcome to this meeting of the Office School Committee to, it's a workshop to bring us up to date on where we are with the new EL, the results of about a year and a half's work by the building committee, which is a citizens' building committee that provide the input and the design guidance for what you're going to see tonight. This is several iterations into the design process and what we hope to bring to the community. So there are updates that I am not even familiar with at this point because they happened like yesterday.
Yes, yes.
And would be the thing. So it is a dynamic process. It is, it is not final at this point in time. Adjustments are still being made. We have birds in here, I see.
Crickets.
Crickets, oh, sorry.
Cricket, come on.
They were birds. So this is to bring us and the community up to date with the latest information so we have the information we need to talk to our constituents and move forward. So I'm going to turn it over to either Mark or Lisa, whoever wants to be the lead.
Yes, you got it, Ryan.
You got it.
Good job, Mark.
All right. So tonight's presentation is an overview of where we're at in the process, as Tom said. We'll go over the schedule, where we're at in the DOE schedule, where we're at in the project schedule, as well as the steps to get to referendum. We'll also look at concept site design, concept building design, and as Tom said, those changed as of yesterday with our phone call to the DOE. We'll look at local options and some questions that were raised at the last meeting, or even the meeting before, that just weren't answered fully yet, so we've brought answers to some of those questions. So the DOE process, for anyone who's seen our presentation, this is included in every single one. It's the 21-step process with the Department of Education, the large orange bars are the major milestones and sign-off points with the Department of Education, and the smaller orange boxes are the many steps in between. I should say the many milestones, and there are several steps in between all those. Right now, we're in the box. I can see from here, that's really hard to see that on the screen, but essentially, we're building up to concept approval. And what that is, is making sure that we're in alignment with the state as to what is in the building for square footage, what they're paying for and what the local community pays for, and that we have all of the drawings and information to them in a timely manner so that we can get this approved by the state board before we go to referendum. And so this has been our, hmm.
Is that that same slide that you have? No.
I'm going to exit the PowerPoint and see if we can not have this jump around. That's really odd. We'll, eh. Well, imagine. So. Have a solution to the, yeah?
Sprinkle some magic dust.
Tech dust.
Is Mr. Manili coming to?
That's an excuse.
Who? That was closed.
It wanted to. Okay, one more thing here.
It's coming at eight on Friday. Six thirty.
Hmm. It does not want to display this information.
What did you create that slide with?
Got it. Excel.
Got it.
Excel?
Yeah.
What time is the game?
Okay.
Friday, six thirty?
Absolutely.
The schedule is basically what meetings have taken place and where, what ones are planned in the future to take us from where we are now to referendum, what the meetings are with the school board's approval, the city council approval, the submission to the state, the state's board, DOE meeting to approve and then allow us to go forward to referendum. They have to approve the language and the actual question is going out in the public referendum so that we have to be on board with that, both from the school committee's point of view and the city council.
There you go.
Look at that.
All right. All right, let's try.
There we go.
All right.
Try that.
So this is the schedule to get us to a June referendum, and so the, I don't dare touch it, so I'm going to stand up. Tomorrow, we meet, I shouldn't say Tuesday, I should say Thursday, that may change, but yeah. So February 21st, we head back up to DOE to bring them additional information and address some other questions that they have, go over what the state is looking to have for square footage, costs, as well as what the local items for the community may get to see as a different project. Then we meet with the building committee on the 26th, which is the following Tuesday, and then we're back up to DOE on March 4th. And essentially, March 4th is the last meeting with the DOE before we have to submit the final application to them. And so we have building, oh, thank you. So we have, ooh, that's really loud. So we have the building committee meeting, school committee, city council, and those are the dates to where we have to have approval as to what's going into the referendum question, and that means dollar values, as well as how we're formulating the question. The straw poll would be March 13th, and the final submission to DOE would be March 15th with our school construct, our DOE construction committee meeting on the 2nd of April and the DOE state board on April 10th. And we've heard the question before, why so early but ahead of June? We have to back up 30 days from the referendum to have all that language dialed in, and this is how it aligns with the state board meeting. So we're really, have a few weeks here to really dial that in. So that's the schedule to get to June referendum. Let me see if I can. So this is the floor plan, the last time that it was presented, two meetings ago, and we'll go over briefly what the, the major changes are. It's a lot of granular changes at this point, if you will, really looking at how much space is for different programs and how spaces are arranged. I'm going to fly through these pretty quickly so you can see the previous floor plans. And this is, we'll jump to the site real quick. This, the major changes on the site that have occurred, and again, this is kind of hard to see. Let me blow it up. So the major change is, as soon as I touch the mouse. Mark's going to point it out, but it's right next to the parking lot, the practice field used to be right in that area. DOE asked that we look at if there's another location on the site that that can exist for two reasons. There are some pretty steep grades in that area that we would have to infill, as well as wetlands. And so what we looked at is moving it up to an overlap of the softball field. And so you can see where Mark's pointing up there. Overlapping that practice field over the softball field worked. We had to move the field a little bit down to the lower left-hand corner. And the other change that happened is we used to have two streets that connected right through there, and instead of connecting those streets, we have a cul-de-sac at the end of one, and the other one connects back to Harris Street so that traffic can continue through those two streets, but we can still gate off the entrance to the school in the event that we need to. Those are the major site changes since the last time. So as for the floor plan, I'm sure it's pretty hard to tell what's changed. The major things, oops. The major things that have changed are the location of the culinary aspirations program. It used to be here. We've now have it adjacent to the culinary, as well as the cosmetology in this area. What that does is it provides better access to the servery and flow through the servery at the kitchen that serves the school, as well as it provides access to the dining area from both culinary programs. The building services that was on the back end of here has now been folded under and is below building storage so that it doesn't stick out as far. We don't have as much, the road for the fire trucks don't have to go out as far, and it allows us to not have such a long service area in the back.
So you made that two floors?
Yes. So there's a, as you can see, there's a stair right there.
It's like a basement area. If you go to the current EL, we can move down in the boy, similar.
Some of the other changes, just massaging some of the CTE programs in this area. One of the health classrooms, our PE classrooms was in the back here. We've now brought it forward so it has better adjacency to the auxiliary gym. We've taken the SOS-RETC that was on this front corner and flipped it to the back, which was where the daycare program was, and flipped the daycare program to the front. That did a couple things. One, it separated the daycare from the manufacturing, which was a concern of, I believe, the, several folks with the DOE raised a concern about that, but also when we had it in the back, there was no place for the playground. So by bringing it up front and moving the practice field, we allowed to have a lot more flat area adjacent to the daycare for the play, the play area for the children.
The entrance to the daycare will be where? Right there where that gray line is? Right there?
They would come in here to come into the daycare. Other major changes, there aren't too many major changes. It's a lot of fine tuning at this point, pushing and pulling of walls, straightening out walls to make it as economical as possible. I can't think of any other big changes, can you?
No, I think there was yesterday a recommendation to carve out another office inside the gym. That was a pretty small change as well. So the good news is that we're down to these really small changes in the plan as we're moving forward, and that'll continue as we move forward, but the overall organization and size of the building really isn't changing much.
Yeah, on the second floor, again, minor changes. I think we had the broadcast media in front of the mechanical. We've now flipped it to where broadcast media is up against the theater-only and mechanical's on this side, isolating the studio so we have better acoustic separation between the mechanical space and the broadcast media studio. Just some rearranging of some of the special ed spaces up by the life skills area, making sure all those adjacencies are dialed in, and.
Lisa, what's the big white space?
This one right here?
Go to the gym.
Behind the blue.
Here? That is the roof below. So we're at the second floor looking down, so when we cut the floor plan, you're looking at the roof below of music and our chorus and band.
Thank you.
Yeah. I don't think there's been any significant changes or any changes at all to this floor plan since the last time we met. And just further refinements of the exterior of the building, we'll continue to refine this as we go along, which is really looking at dialing in windows and materiality and glazing. If there aren't any questions on the floor plans and the building form, we'll get into the local items for discussion.
Any questions, Dan? No? Alfreda?
Could we get an updated of your revisions, like a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea to switch the daycare to, that was a good idea.
We can email anything. We'll email some updates.
Right. I'm just putting notes and switching it with what I've got, so, thank you.
What is the square footage difference change?
From the last one, we're not 100% sure at this moment. We're calculating it for tomorrow's meeting. Like we said, these changes happened last, one of last night, pretty much for our phone call, but we'll provide that as well. Nothing significant.
Nothing, okay. Seems like just things removed and.
Yeah.
Do you like the plan? The way it came out?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'd all be a big one.
Well, with the new additions or the new subtractions?
Yeah, I think that what we're trying to do is, is working with the department to take in consideration all the recommendations they have. We're still, there's still a few areas that they're recommending. We examine a little bit more, but I think in general, they're very content with the plan and the range of things, and, and we are too.
You are, so they are too, by and large?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
I have one follow-up question. I remember when I went to see the Sanford School, what really struck me was how huge, you know, the entryways were from one, to me, it seemed like such a waste of space that you could really use for other stuff. So what, what does it look like as you're walking through here? Is it as big as that, as what's in Sanford? Or is it a little smaller?
Yeah, we'll go back to, and it's hard to get a sense of comparative scale of this, but one of the things that we're trying to do is really make this real appropriate in certain areas. And so what, what we have in the front area, and I'll, I guess.
So the main.
There we go. The main entrance and, and public lobby is, is a relatively short distance right here. It goes to about 100, a little over 100 feet, and, and that really is that public zone where you have access to understanding a lot of the spaces, a lot of the public spaces right here. And then there's a student common space, and that's, that's really how you feel the scale of the building, and it won't feel that very large. There's a second story directly over you as you walk in, and it opens up a little bit with a two-story space as you get over into this area. So the scale of this feels really nice. You have a view out to the courtyard, which will, will help in terms of your sense of where you are in the building. That's something Sanford doesn't have. When you walk right in, it's, it's got a lot of spaces all around a bit, but you don't get any views to the outside. So having this little window into the courtyard, we think is going to help with that, that sense of where you are in the building. And then, as you come down here, the other central node is, is right here. So there's really this one, two, and three, these are the primary nodes. So way we organize this is to really aid in people being able to understand where they are in the building and, and where to access things and have a really comfortable scale as you move through it. So I don't know, Lisa, does anything you want to add?
Just the other thing to think about is the amount of students that will be in the building and traveling in those locations during school, too. It feels different when it's small groups going through those spaces, but when you have changing of classes and things like that, or changing of, of periods between lunch, you start to feel one that's not appropriate, appropriately sized.
Oh, hi. Does the ceiling go on the first floor when you're coming in?
So right, right here as you walk in, the ceiling will be somewhere around 10 feet. So it won't, it won't be that large at all. And then it'll start to open up to a larger space over here, but, but around, around 10 feet right here, so it feels, feels pretty comfortable.
Can you explain, if I could explain, Jenny, when we talk about interior features, we're talking about display cases. The state pays for a wall.
Yep.
So that's not the state.
Thanks, Michelle. So I know that's come up of, wow, that's a lot of money for interior features, but picture if you walked in, it was just cement. So the, the DOE doesn't pay for you to have display cases, things that you would want to make it feel homey. So when you walk in, there's, you know, wood finishing, there's some displays going on. So that, I think, is important because it looks like it's a big dollar, but when you think about, like in here, all this wood would be interior finishing.
Right.
Right. So just so people understand, it's, it's, it's to make it feel like a school, warm, be able to display student work or things like that.
Some of it actually goes to even more durable materials, and so the idea of the flooring material, instead of using the lower-cost, basic material that the state will pay for, it's to upgrade it to something that'll last a lot longer, too.
Nice. That's a good point.
I agree with Alfreda.
Like the no waxing and stuff.
I agree with Alfreda. When you went into Sanford, it was cap, it was like a cave. It was dark, and it was just like a cave when you walked.
They don't have a lot of natural light, that's why.
Right.
A lot of stone.
The entry area was a large volume space, too, so.
So, and, and we didn't talk about this, but the flooring won't require waxing and stripping. Like right now, we spend a lot of time on our vacations stripping them.
That's right.
All this would, would lower those costs is, you can care for them with just mopping and so forth, so that's a real positive.
What kind of flooring?
Right now, we have rubber flooring, so rubber tiles. It's also more resilient, too. A lot of teachers like it better.
And more quiet, yes, exactly. Much better.
No asbestos in it? No lead? No, no, right? We're not doing that, right?
We got the good stuff with the asbestos.
We're not doing that, right?
It was on sale, but.
Depends if you buy it on the black market or not, but most of the stuff we get is not.
We're all competitive bidding, so.
I just wanted to bring up, what, what, what are we getting for those dollars? Are you getting an upgrade in the flooring, the finishing?
You want that one?
Just, yeah, again, the, the state will provide a pretty basic, you get a, get a wall, they won't pay for brick on the inside, they'll pay for block on the inside, and, and the flooring is, would look, you know, like a very basic tile flooring. And, and so, and then the other interior upgrades that we're contemplating, the idea of having transparency into some of the spaces, so this idea of coming in, and the, the public coming in and having an access to the satellite culinary space, so.
Light, bright, warm.
We're calling it the little green ladle, I think, right now. And same, same thing with the library, a bright, light-filled space with views out to the courtyard in the case of what we're contemplating.
The library, I know today, you know, students are involved with the electronics quite a bit, and, and today's library is, is, to me, is not the same as it was yesterday. Can you talk to that a little bit? So if I walk in the library, what am I going to see? You know, I'm sure I'm not going to see zillions of books as compared to what used to be there.
Yeah, the, the evolution of the library sort of went through a phase called the digital commons sometimes, or the digital media center, and the latest buzzword that everyone's using is learning commons, and the idea that you're having multiple resources in that, so it's not simply what we used to think of as the resources of a library. They are digital resources, there are places for students to collaborate and make presentations on materials, it's to get guidance on resources as well. So there's still reference resources that, that students are being guided on in terms of access to those, but a lot of it is also spaces to, to, to work collaboratively inside of the, in the library as well, and, and fewer stacks because there are resources online. But, but there's still a culture of books that is important and.
It's a lot more about flexibility, so having the flexibility to resource the, or access the resources, but also have all the different seating areas, being able to move some of the stacks, really have a flexible space.
That's good, that's good.
One of the big differences between this space and this space is the volume of the space and allowing that, a little bit higher volume to get that light in.
Yeah.
Yep. Big difference.
Been a long day. Yeah, I just love that picture. But that's not us. I know, but it really looks good. And that's not how we're going to look, right?
Yeah, that, that is.
But this has been our inspiration for connecting to the outside, so this is their commons or their cafeteria, looking from the courtyard back into it. So our vision is that we are creating something similar to that.
Yeah, so that students can eat outside, have that option to eat outside. Right now, when they eat outside.
In the courtyard?
They eat outside in the, in the road, on picnic tables. Right? And it's not very safe, and students can slip away. This is much more contained.
You will be able to see in and out.
Exactly. A lot more supervision.
Wonderful, wow.
Definitely.
Wonderful. A lot more supervision without appearing to be supervised.
Exactly.
Right.
That's, that's the key.
Yeah.
The library's changing more, like the university, if you go to Bates, you know, it's much more a university feel.
Or even that CMCC as well.
Exactly.
They've got great renovations going.
That wall right there is clearly, it's, we're thinking of that as glass wall.
Okay, it's going to be nice, okay.
Dining, right in that area.
Yeah, nice.
And then actually, the library, we can banish that as well, so if it's a nice weather to be able to have that.
Will the library have that glass on it, too?
Yes.
Oh, good. Cool, very nice. That's a nice feature.
How, what are the dimensions of that, the courtyard, from like the end of the library to the other wall? Just an approximate, do you know?
Yeah, I'm trying to approximate. So the gauge that I use is that the classroom, width of the classroom wing is about.
150.
Well, this is about 60 feet right here.
How many feet?
60. So we get a sensor, we have lockers, our 60 feet, we've got, whatever it is.
Like 120 by 140?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Big enough.
Good amount of space.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we talked yesterday about the landscaping in there, being, they're researching hard about things that don't need a lot of mowing. So there are grasses and stuff that you can put in that is, it's different kind, not grasses we know it, but.
Ornamental grasses, they call it.
Yeah, or, right, exactly.
Ornamental.
Ornamental.
Ornamental grasses.
In hardscape.
Right, so, exactly. So, and the DOE was like, that's really good that you're doing that. A lot of research around what you put out there so that it can last and be, not, little maintenance.
Right.
Low maintenance.
Hard to see here, but the outline of the dark area right here, that's the hardscape. And so these lighter areas are the landscape areas. And so it's really, the intent is as low as maintenance as possible. And this is intended as an outdoor learning space, so the idea, can you bring a couple of classes together, actually conduct a class outside as well as providing informal spaces. And so our hope is it's really an active and used courtyard that's not simply just a light well.
And will we continue the theme of that hardscaping ornamental grasses to the parking lots and around the building?
Absolutely.
So that landscape allowance that we have is the, in the local line item, is to populate that area hardscapes. We call it softscape or the ornamental grasses, and then the landscaping out in front of the building. So really, the high-impact areas.
And it could be a gift in kind.
Absolutely.
Can I go back through some of these images for a second here?
And so.
I was just going to say that this is what we envision for what we've created as the satellite library. So we've taken some of the square footage that were allocated for the library areas and created these satellite library or learning space, group learning spaces that are part of the classroom clusters so that kids can break out of their classroom, work as groups, work individually, have more flexible spaces outside the classroom with supervision. So where you see the glazing right there is where the assistant principal's office would be, or the workroom for the faculty.
These are very popular in all the schools that we looked at, that they were spaces that you could do, all right, Mark, you go out of the room and do this type of thing. Or after school, you could get to group, with a group of students in that space. They were very popular wherever we looked. They liked to move around a lot at that age especially, and I think that's, socialize.
Absolutely.
That's really key.
One of the things that we talked about when we began early in the process is giving students spaces that they feel, that are their spaces. When you walk into the classroom, it feels like the classroom is a domain of the teacher, and the intent of this is to really make it feel like. Is to really make some of these spaces feel that the students have agency and that this space, these spaces belong to them as well in school buildings. It's a really important part of ownership and pride in their facility.
So interesting how we sway from one concept to another. You know, there was a time when we didn't want any kids in the hallway because if they were, that meant they were out of control, and teacher was not in control, and now we want them out. But it is the nature of that age. I don't blame them, I'd be out there, too.
Well, it gives them ownership, too, so that they have more investment and care.
Yeah.
Everybody learns differently, too. So some excel in the classroom setting, where some excel in more of this broken-out space with small groups.
The other part of these out, spaces that they broke out was your thing, Tom, that they had monitors or TVs or whatever. We wanted information that was, that was out there. In the library, there was one school that had four different big forty-five-inch TVs, and they all had a news on of two channels, the weather channel on or something. But Tom liked these ideas because they could, you could see the guts of the building, too. He could program the guts of the building so that kids could have a science class with it.
And so the program spaces, these informal spaces that we're locating, are strategically placed where you have the greatest density of the classrooms. And so it's that orange bar that says group learning. I don't know if you can all see that or not, but that's where, that's where we envision these with tables and study areas for students. And so, so that it's really proximal to the rest of the classrooms, and it's very convenient and easy, and there's a lot of supervision on them. They're not in hidden areas of the building.
Then we're creatively using the media state allocation. This is not additional local dollars for these spaces. So what we did is talked to the librarian at EL and say, if we adjust this and put space there, do you still have the media center that will best meet our needs? And she agreed. So we did consult with the staff about doing this as a possibility.
In the classrooms, it doesn't appear that they are connected from within the class, but they're just from the outside of it.
Classroom, but everybody can see what's going on.
And we will have doors between them that you can circulate between the classrooms.
Special services. What's the gray on the orange?
The gray?
Yeah.
Those are restrooms.
Restrooms, up there?
Individual user toilets, yeah.
Okay.
So what used to be underneath those four gray spots that now is orange, it was light, like a teal?
We've modified them some over the weeks. It's right now, the orange is the assistant principal.
IP, okay.
And we've spread those throughout the school so that you can have supervision on all floors.
Good.
And the idea of the, we have two staff toilets on the interior side for each workroom, which the staff will appreciate. And then we have individual toilet rooms on the other side, which is nice, too, for students. We see those. Typically, there's less issues on the individual toilets than on the larger group toilets.
Right.
Scott, in your office, the EL principal will be on the first floor as you come in the door, right around that area?
He actually has a penthouse suite at, no, I'm kidding.
It's on the fourth floor.
Did you say the cube?
So this is an image of that same school where we're looking from the courtyard back into the commons, and this is their community stair. And so really, it becomes the social hub for all the students, both during school and after school and before school. But it's also a presentation or lecture space as well, because the wall across from us, or the wall that you can't see, to be that way, has a projection screen and projector as well. So we've positioned the community stair within the school to replicate that as well. So we have the most flexible space we can, envision that space being used all day long.
Sanford also had a small stage that was underneath the screen, like, or someplace right there.
They didn't have a wall you could project on, use that as seating. Theirs was open like a stage, it was going to be that.
Right. They had a stage. I think that would get a lot of use.
Right, and I tell people, what's the cost of a lecture hall?
It depends on how many seats.
Right. But some of the schools we saw had additional lecture halls, and this is a compromise. You know, not having a smaller lecture hall, that could be used for the lecture hall. So I think if you went with, what does Mount Blue have, maybe a hundred?
It could be used for one-act plays.
Right, exactly. It can be used for a smaller venue.
Yep, you can have multiple classes there doing presentations. At the top of the stair, too, is where they had more of their high-top cafeteria seating with those big screens that we were talking about. Displayed all the information, whether it be weather announcements, but also student artwork. And so there's always things circulating through. And the whole time we were there, there was kids up there studying because it was directly adjacent to the library as well. So the spaces were heavily used by the students, which was great to see.
How many kids can sit on those stairs? I know it depends if they're, how they're sitting, but.
That's a good question. We'll have to do a takeoff and figure out how many kids can sit on the steps.
And that would be another space that, when the school's not in session, obviously, that the community might be able to access.
Absolutely.
So it's just a comparison between the commons. And then the.
Current cafeteria.
Theater and.
Is this Sanford?
No, this is, I believe, Westbrook.
Westbrook, okay.
Yep. Sanford's smaller, so this, I believe, is thousand, yeah. And Sanford's right around eight hundred.
Looks very much like Sanford, the same setup. Thought that's what I was looking at.
Yeah. And then this was just a comparison to the existing performance space. So the reason we went back through those was just to kind of highlight this idea of interior finishes and features and the items that we're looking to have within the building. So whether it be the rubber tiles, the wood that you see here, that warm wood, it's also an acoustic material as well. Just really looking to enhance the interior and being specific about where we're doing it. So the heavily-used areas by both the students and the public, and making sure that those are really warm and inviting and pleasant spaces to be in.
And again, when you're looking at the whole first floor, where is that exactly?
Yep, I'll go back up to the floor plan.
Yeah, next to the library. Next, right next to the library.
So.
Up above.
Yeah.
Okay.
Stairs that we were looking at extend from here, and they go up to the second floor, so they, right there. And so as you come in, almost looking at if there's wood along that wall in the picture we were looking at, and the glass wall is right here. So it's sort of flipped from the presentation we saw on the other one, but that's where that occurs, right here. And so if we go to the second floor, you can see the top of the stairs and how they come up to this area on the top. So you can actually, and there's a set of stairs that run through to this corridor, adjacent to the tiered seating.
So we wanted, I don't, there's something funny happening with these slides, so I'm going to keep it out of presentation mode. And I think the text is big enough for you to be able to see that. So this is the information that, at the last meeting, was requested and hadn't been calculated yet. So really, the question that's come up about the theater, and right now, currently, we have a twelve-hundred-seat theater in the program. The state pays for, I think it's three hundred and eighty plus or minus seats, based on our student population that we're designing for. And so if we were to go from twelve-hundred seats down to a thousand seats, that would reduce the overall cost by approximately five hundred thousand dollars. To drop it to another, drop it another two hundred seats and take it down to eight hundred would take off about a million dollars. So that's not an additional million, that's overall a million dollars approximately off of the total cost. So those are the figures, about every two hundred seats, we drop about five hundred thousand dollars.
Right, and I did, I did speak to one of the school board chair, not chair, school committee members in Lewiston last week, and asked about where they were with their project. And their first phase of their project is they're building a fine arts wing, which, because they don't have course rooms, band rooms, so forth. And then the second phase, they're looking at a thousand-seat auditorium. So, you know, I said to the exchange club yesterday, either we're going to build it or they're going to build it. So we have decided economic driver, we want, I would think, want to be the economic driver with this project. But that is what, somebody had asked me, well, what's Lewiston looking at building? Now, it's years away because they're doing the first phase, but just that's something they have a hope for. So just as an FYI.
Actually, Bob Stone had the right idea on a post that he had, that we should have a large theater complex over where the old Libby Mill used to be, and it should be shared cost with Lewiston and Auburn. And my household said, that ship has sailed, so that's not going to happen on it. So having said what Katie just said, I had the opportunity of speaking with the director of Franco and Mitch Thomas. And I said, what do you think? And he said, go for it, because either you're going to go for it, he said, or Lewiston's going to go for it, he said. I said, how many seats do you have? He said, four hundred and fifty at the max I could put in. I said, would you use our facility? And he said, yes, he would use our facility on bigger events that they might hold on it. So he's very much in favor of it. I did ask him to speak to us, and I didn't contact him today to come, but he said he would come and speak to us, but he sees no problem with this at all. CLT doesn't have a problem with it either on it, because they do two different things, and they're small. And if you've ever been to CLT in the summertime, for the children's program, you die. So they would be interested in the air conditioning part of it. And I did speak to John Blanchett. I know him very well, and I had spoken to him this summer, so he, they were interested. And in fact, one of the CLT people has been on our subcommittees, I believe, on the.
Are there any other questions about the?
Yeah, Katie, didn't you, I hear you once say that you had talked to some other school, and they were renting out their large auditorium they built that could bring in outside revenue?
Right. So when we talked to, Adam reached out to the business manager at Westbrook that has the thousand seat, and they have forty-six events at their auditorium throughout the year. It pays for itself. So the first three years, it did not make a profit, but after the third year, it was self-sustaining. They now currently have a fund balance of over a hundred thousand dollars from their auditorium. And it also obviously has all the school events. They use it for different things. He has, he said schools come in and out using it. And so it pays for its director and its operational costs. It's like, it's like our lunch program and our daycare programs. You know, they're self-sufficient. So it's similar. So yes, Bob.
That's good.
Adam, were you the one that also said that they have a group in Southern Maine, Merrill, Westbrook, and Sanford? And they get together and see who can attract, who can fit an event best in their auditorium, in their performing arts on it. If it's the ballet, it might go to Merrill or something like that. But they get together, and then, it wasn't you that told me this? No, and then, actually, I don't know who it was, but Sanford did go to New York. And in New York, they, he kind of scouted around or to see what might be interested in coming to their auditorium. And he said that he could fill it very quickly. Was it you?
Well, the director, he, when I talked to the superintendent of Sanford, the former superintendent who built the auditorium, the director has a salary in the general fund and is expected to offset the salary with revenue. And so he has to bring in enough, obviously, outside rentals to help support his salary. And so the director spoke to Bill Buzz, and Bill's not here tonight, but spoke to Bill Buzza because Bill went down to Sanford. I had him go visit again.
That's who I spoke to.
And Bill said that, yes, he's been marketing and looking to make sure, and he said, they've already booked several, several performances. They had a late start because the auditorium was the last to be finished. Matter of fact, when we visited, it was not finished. When we visited again with Franklin School, it was completed, and we got to talk to the director.
Right.
So he thinks, I think he's booking for next year as well, because it opened later. But yes, people are already asking about it. And there are eight hundred and sixty seats.
And that night that we were there, that Friday that we were there, that night, they were having a, like a grand opening for seat buyers that had participated in donating seats. So they were going to have a little reception for them.
Right.
There was a benefit, too, that we heard from educators in Westbrook that students had access to some of the performances that were coming in. So they were coming in for an event at night. They were able to work out a situation that students who wouldn't normally have access to those sorts of programs, just an added value for our students.
Yeah, I think, I'm trying to think if we talked about the. Yeah, I think, I'm trying to think if we talked about the last time, but the idea also that Career Tech can take advantage of some of the technology and training students on some of the lighting and sound systems that are in the performing arts space as well.
So if we don't go with the 1,200 and we reduce it down to one of those choices, that makes the space smaller, right? And the state would love us, right?
The state what?
Would really like us.
Uh, no, because this is all in the local...
Local, local, okay, yeah. Except for the 400 seats.
Correct.
And they pay for those 400 seats whether we do 1,200, 1,000 or 800, right? And the 400 seats, the ground, the floor too, they pay for that square footage of the floor.
Yep, the volume.
So when we said last week that a chair might have cost $2,500, we're not just including this chair, we're including the floor, the space and everything.
Correct.
Okay. Because we had a discussion in my household. Oh, yeah.
So the other outstanding question at the last meeting was looking at if we did not go with geothermal for heating and cooling and we went with the traditional chilled water cooling system, what would that, and sorry for the typo, I can see it jumping out at me right away. What would be the difference in operating costs? And so without geothermal, the operating cost would go up 87 cents per square foot.
That's an important factor right there. And Andy just left.
Well, he's going to hear it again at six.
So that's your payback on geothermal.
After the last meeting, it was brought to our attention, there was a mathematical error in the interior finishes slides. And we noticed that one of the line items was off by 246,550. So on those slides, the summary slide versus the breakdown were off. And so it's the lesser of the two numbers that is actually accurate. So the, what was in the total summary slide is correct, not the breakdown that we had shown. And when we get to that slide, I'll point it out in a little bit more detail. The other item that came up was the maintenance of the turf field. So we reached out to a company that we work with and they gave us a breakdown of the maintenance required for the turf fields. But every six months, you need to groom the field. And if you work with a service provider to do that in lieu of buying machinery and doing it yourself, it's about $2,500 each time for each field. You have to have regular attention to specific wear areas, so those that are worn more than others. And then brushing and infill when displaced every time that that's done. And I think they recommend that about once a year, doing a complete infill is about $1,800 plus or minus. Magnet service, so if there's any metal that gets into the field that needs to be removed, it's about $1,000 per service. I'm sorry, a lot of typos in here.
You've been very busy.
Typing too fast. Field design pattern service, so this is different, oh, different mow patterns. And changing up...
Different what patterns?
Mow patterns.
Mow.
You know, when you look and it's crisscross.
It can look like a checkerboard or...
So every time that you want to change or have a design pattern, it's about $1,500.
Okay, so if you had a grass field, okay, so then you'd have to buy the big 50-pound bags of grass plus. You'd have to have either a landscaper put it down or Billy's crew put it down. You'd have to be sure that it was fertilized, limed, watered.
Hope it's not sunny.
And you'd have to hope that it wasn't raining and sunny on it to wash it go so that you could go back to the feed and grain store and buy 50-pound bags again and bring them and seed them and do it all over again on it. And then it would cost mowing for it. So Billy's crew would have to mow it. Okay? And then it would always be down early in the spring because we had wear areas. May not have to grass it all over, but there would be wear areas on it. Right, Leroy, you remember all of this?
He has no memory.
He has no memory? So there'd be wear areas that you'd have to deal with. So there's a cost to both ways on it. I'm curious as to what our people who have been doing the fields, asking them for what their assessment is because they have been doing our fields.
Yep, Billy's here.
Right. So Billy, does that sound like thus far removed from what we're doing now? As far as the cost and the functions that are going on?
It's higher.
That is a lot easier. Price-wise, it's probably comparable. We spend about $1,500 or something like those. Our biggest issue is they use so often, we have a hard time getting those programs, the fertilizing, the seeding and stuff like that in there because people are wanting to use the field. You don't have that issue with the artificial turf.
And the artificial turf?
Artificial turf is much more beneficial.
Okay, and then the artificial turf. Talk to me a little bit about that again. I know we talked about it a little bit. We talked about it having to be replaced after a certain amount of time. Can you address that again so I can wrap my head around it?
Yeah, depending on use, you replace the turf itself ten, every 10 years or so.
Every 10 years.
Yeah, depends on...
And the cost for the turf, you know, I mean, it would be kind of nice to see them both laid out and say, okay, this is this one and this is this one, this is what it looks like. Cost-wise.
Yeah, we can get that. That's the turf people love to have that comparison because they're trying to sell you their products. So they give you that all the time. So we can get that for you.
And we may be able to, we haven't reached out, but Lewiston, we may be able to contract in a way that when they bring people in to do their field, you know, when somebody's here, they're using, they're doing it at the same time.
Yeah, collaboration.
Exactly.
That's what I'm thinking as we're looking at these different things. Where can we collaborate with the other, right across the river?
So that's something Todd Sampson would probably reach out and say, what is your schedule? What, you know? Is there a way we can bid on it together?
So I went, my grandson played baseball in Connecticut and they had tremendous turf fields. They had parks that played only baseball. And if you went on a hot day, all you could smell was rubber tires on it. And it was gross after a while. So we're not talking that type, right?
No, no, I mean, they're, I don't know what the rubber tire smell was coming from, but there's...
Rubber in the turf.
Well, right, there are different products. You can actually put the different crumb in there that may add to a degree as well. So there is a suggestion too, on the really warm days, that you cool off the surface with water, using water cannons on it to actually cool it off.
Two minutes. Those were the outstanding questions that we had. The other slides we have are just re-showing the local items.
Dan, are there any other questions or concerns that they have? All right, I'd like to just take a five minute break while we put the chairs up and get everyone seated around so we're ready to do our joint, meeting the city council and see most of them.
They're here.
Grab a chair, bro.
Mike's still live, guy.
I know. To further our discussion of the new EL project and bring everyone, keep everyone appraised of what's going on, what steps have been taken, deal with the questions and concerns that you've heard from the community and our responses to those questions and concerns. We also want to bring you up to date. This is, as I've mentioned before, and it will continue to be a fluid situation. Nothing is definitive yet in terms of what the state has decided, what we have decided, what we are presenting, what's going forward, what's not going forward. So it's dynamic, and that's the best way I can describe that. We are closing in on that. The adjustments that are being made week to week are getting smaller and smaller and not larger and larger, which is a good thing. Which means we are addressing the concerns that the state has put before us. And to the most part, they have agreed that we are respecting their wishes and that our design is falling within the parameters that they have asked us to design and to have for a facility. They're interested in us keeping this moving forward. They're supporting us in where we're going with this and what our needs are for our students. The architects and Katie and Adam have been meeting with the state on a regular basis, yesterday being the most frequent conversation with them in order to keep us moving forward at the pace we need in order to get this school built when we want it built. So in order to bring everyone up to date with the latest changes so that we can kind of kick off from there and follow up with concerns and questions that you've had over the last week, I'm going to turn it over to Mark and Lisa and we're going to just give you an idea of what changes have come forth from the last time we talked.
Great. Thank you, Tom. So we're delighted to be with you folks again. And for the people who sat through our last presentation, I'm sorry that you have to see it all again. But we'll go through some of the fine-tuned, fine-tuning that's happened on the design of the building. Before that, we'll just give you a quick update on the schedule, again, where we're at and where we're marching toward. And then I think the ideas, we really want to get into the local options and questions that you have as well. So we'll try to move quickly through the first items, but please, if you have questions as we're doing this, stop us and ask your questions. We'll get answers to you. So as we've discussed and we understand again that this is a lot of information on the screen and in really tiny type that you can't see. So, but the idea is that we're in that black box in the middle of the process with the big bar in the middle there being the concept approval that allows us to go to referendum. And so that's, we're marching toward that. We have a lot of steps in between there. We're meeting frequently with the Department of Education, as Tom stated. Yesterday, we had a marathon phone call in like two and a half hours going through a series of questions that they had, just as they're getting more and more familiar with the design concepts and the direction we're moving. And it was very, very positive meeting, so we're feeling more and more comfortable. The questions are getting to the point where they're much smaller and even outside a little bit of, there are more suggestions outside of where we would cover as part of the concept design at this point in the process. So that's all been very, very positive. And we have another one scheduled for tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, I think, nine or nine-thirty up at Augusta. So, and we're getting more and more information all the time. That's going to be an important one because we feel like they're getting to the point where they're really about to say, okay, here's, we're comfortable with you guys submitting for this concept approval. So we're right on the cusp of that and we're feeling very, very good about that as well. So, next. Ah, it's working. So, so these are the milestones that we've been marching along with. And our next milestones are the meeting tomorrow. We have a series of meetings the following week and then the week after that. And all marching up toward the approval of the local amount that needs to go on the ballot. And so right now, we've got that built in on the March 6th as the school committee approval of that. And then that going to the city council approval on March 11th. So those are important milestones on your side of the table. And that's why we've been having these series of meetings to get us there. Then after that is done, then we'll have a public hearing, a straw poll, where the community again can be informed about the design of the project and have an opportunity to listen to that in some level of detail. And then ask the question of them that we will put towards the community, which is do you support moving forward with this school design? And then we're going to go very quickly through the, we're calling tweaks. So I think, prior, yeah, prior to this meeting, or even prior to our last meeting, we sent everyone electronic copies of the floor plan, so you all had that. We're going to send updates that you'll see tonight, but they're changing every day a little bit. So this is where we were with it. That's what you had seen. We had shown you the three floors and walked through the design of the building, the second floor, and then the small part that's on the third floor and what the square footage was, what, and that it's, you know, its size relative to the current building. And understanding that that includes a whole new component to the building that you don't have, which is the satellite career tech center. So that's about 50,000 square feet or a little bit less than that. So that's, and then the design we had shown, yeah. So that was the overall massing of the building. We're right now just trying to understand how the different heights of the building areas correspond to each other and where windows would be, what type of materials, where is it solid, where is it open? So that helps us as we work on this in both two dimensions and three dimensions. Here's the site plan with the red outline of the school, the existing school. So you can see, there's a question that came up on the last meeting right before here with the school board on what is the size of the courtyard. And it's actually helpful to see the two of them. You can see the inner square on the red of the existing footprint. And then you can see where the courtyard is on, it's the one area inside of the orange volume or orange area. And that, so you can see they're relatively similar in size. So if anyone is familiar with the existing courtyard size, you get a sense of how big the new courtyard is going to be. Couple of significant changes that we are working, that we've worked on since we last met with, and these were comments that came up from the Department of Ed. One of them was that we had a practice field off of Auburn Heights entrance off of Western Ave. And we'll circle around where that is. So I don't know if everyone can understand orientation all. So. So to give you an understanding of the orientation of the site, this is Harris right here coming in. Here's where the current drop-off loop is in the existing building. So you can see where the existing classroom wing and the entrance to the existing building is right here. The new softball field is intended to go right there on a big, right now is a big mound of rock. And that there, right now, I think it's Forest, comes in into the site this way. The state, we originally had this connected, so we had these streets connected. The state said, can you look at an alternate where you dead-end the street? So we built a dead-end turnaround on this road and we connected this roadway back into Harris. And so that is a minor change, but we moved the practice field that used to be down. And Lisa will scroll right down and. So this is Western Ave right here. Here's the entrance, the current entrance and the proposed entrance, so that doesn't change. But it should come in, there's a track. There was a practice field proposed at this area right here. There are some significant grades that go down there and some of them at the bottom, it's a wet area. And so the state said, can you look at doing an overlay onto the softball field, which is what we did. So we went back and said, yeah, there's a little bit of a trade-off. We have a little more ledge. But the trade-off is that we don't have to mitigate the wetlands in that area and also we have a lot less fill in that way. So the state was very happy that we accommodated that and looked at moving that. So that's a consideration as far as the site plan. The other thing that we did was the, by moving that, that helped this access drive that comes around the side of the building and gave a little more space in the front here. And so that was a little more parking and a little more of a buffer to the building itself from the roadway, that service drive.
The other benefit is it created that green space like Mark was talking about next to the building, which is now where we've relocated the early childhood education program. So we have a nice play space for them adjacent to the building.
So, Mark.
Yeah.
When you talk about that the new field will overlay the softball field, what does that mean? What will?
So what that'll mean is you have the skinned infield area for the softball. And then, and so you have this large, open outfield area that's grass, natural turf. And so the idea that instead of creating two larger turf areas, you overlay that so that the boundary of the softball comes and extends and so the green area gets a little bit larger to accommodate a larger field in the outfield area. There'll be a stripe through it so you know where the boundary of the softball edge is. So the outfield ends for the softball are here. But you can't have simultaneous use of the outfield of softball and this other field. But what you do is you gain the efficiency of not producing all this additional turf area, so.
So will that overlay be artificial turf?
Right now, it's not proposed. This is both natural turf in both. And we, when we've talked about a second field as a local option, it wasn't going to be the softball field. Yeah, I'm sorry. When I use turf, sometimes it's natural turf, so I'll use grass, so. Yeah, thank you. Yep, it's common practice too. So we have the field hockey that overlays the baseball in that same way. And because they're not on the same season, again, gives you less maintenance, less cost to develop. And so that, here's the outline of the field hockey and then you can see the outfield of the baseball. So it would be a very similar concept for the softball. Yeah, Jason. Now, these are competition fields for the. So for the baseball and softball, we'll have dugouts on the sidelines there. And then we'll have to look at having bleachers. There'd be, wouldn't be a grandstand style that we're putting at the stadium, but you could have smaller. That is not. So that's part of the additional local expense. There's a small amount of money that we can, so the determination of how many seats we would need. Yep, exactly. Right. Yeah. That'll be practice. Yeah, yep. There's been the question of, does it occur right here? So that you have multipurpose, that it could be used for lots of different sports. And so right now, that was labeled at one time as lacrosse, but it's right next to the soccer and the competition football field, so.
Mark, because the second turf field, we'll call it, the artificial turf field, that one there, because it's a rectangle, why couldn't you take the practice field instead of putting it on top of the softball field and put it on top of the, that one, yes?
So the idea of having the ability to have one, two, three, or four fields was an important consideration when they were developing, what is our list of absolute needs to have onsite to have all the sports functioning here? And that was why it's the idea of having four areas, not having an overlap of that, so.
So where was that originally?
That was down in a little hole. Yeah, so here's as you turn off and pass the residential property and there's a, so tennis courts are right here to give you a sense.
Yep.
So it's right in that area right there. It's kind of a hole gully there.
Will you be able to dump the snow there?
No.
Well. Yeah, I think that as we develop more conversation with Department of Environmental Protection, they're concerned about where we put snow to, so we'll just be working through that carefully.
Mr. Hunter suggested in June that we take the tennis courts and see if we can put them on the side, on the space. There's no other space that we can put that overlay one, that overlay field someplace?
Oh, well, I think, yeah. Again, as we've discussed many times, there's not a lot of extra space, which is why when we originally proposed it, we put it in a space that isn't great to develop anyway. That was that hole right there, so. Yep, we've really maxed out the site. Even the tennis courts are really, I mean, Mr. Hunter got a great suggestion to squeeze them in. And the state, we've compared them to this cost of developing them offsite. And the state has tacitly approved us keeping them here. So, thank you. Any other questions on the site?
That's right, buying rights.
So those are the site updates. We'll go through some of the finer points of the plan updates. And I'll do the same, same thing, kind of walk them through on the screen here. We won't dig into a real deep dive. There are very small tweaks as they are anyway. One suggestion was that we move the PE classroom to the front adjacent to the auxiliary gym. So that's a change here. And so the health classroom is still back there. One of the more major changes that we did is that the program space up here, which was the RETC SOS program, we moved that to the back and we brought the early childhood education program that's part of the career tech. We brought that to the front of the building. And as we just discussed, what's nice about that is that it puts it where we can have a nice outdoor playground area and it has potential for an entrance that's separate from the primary entrance. So that gives a lot of nice features to that. And it separates some of the concerns that were brought up in terms of the program adjacencies to some of the other areas. We had it near the manufacturing spaces of the career tech programs. And that was a suggestion to say, can we find another space? And so we've done that. That worked out well. We're doing some small tweaks of the program, sizes of the program spaces in here, the individual rooms. And we've done a little bit of shuffling of spaces in the center core area. So as we discussed last time, as you come in from the main lobby, you have the cosmetology program, a culinary dining space. And then the, and this is the career tech's sort of the little green ladle, if you will. And then we have the culinary lab right here that serves the culinary dining space. But we put the aspirations culinary program, it used to be up here. It's moved down to be more integrated into this, potentially even to share space of the dining café area. So we think that's an advantage too. So it doesn't just have to be next to the career tech program that maybe the aspirations culinary can use it as well. And what that also did was it gave us a better location for the student serveri off of the commons or the cafeteria. So that worked out well and the state was asking us to look at that. So they were comfortable with that change as well. We tucked the boiler room underneath the custodial and maintenance areas on the back of the building to shorten up this leg that was extending on the south side of the building. And I think those are the major changes on this level. And as we moved to the second floor, we did some relocation of some program spaces here. So adjacent to the performing arts center and the theater, we have the broadcast media studio. And so that's our local access television station. It's got a production lab and some editing rooms as well. So that has flipped to be adjacent to the theater and it separates it from a mechanical room that houses some equipment that we're buffering for sound reasons from those spaces. And I'm trying to think, Lisa, is there anything else on that level?
The other thing we did is that light blue bar in the middle. We just reorganized some of the special ed programs to get better adjacency with some of the life skills programs. So that was the major change at the top part of the floor plan.
No changes to the footprint of the building. I mean, it pretty much is exactly the way it was. So when you get your updated electronic copy, you can sort of put the two together and find out exactly what changed.
Where's Waldo?
Not a lot. Sort of a hocus-pocus exercise. And then the third floor hadn't changed at all. Will look exactly the same.
And the one thing that is missing from this slide that we just want to make sure it's clear has not gone away are the areas of expansion. So we'll still design the floors in those area, or the roofs in those areas to support a floor in the future. And this is just updated exterior massing. It continues to evolve every day. So again, just further refinements of materiality, volumes, window location, window size, canopies, so on and so forth.
Is that a big window or is that a garage door to the?
The aux gym?
This one right here?
Yep.
That's a big window.
Oh, nice.
And it's missing a small piece of material right here. It'll cap it off, but it will still be a pretty large window. Some great natural light.
It's on the north side of the building, so we think that, again, it's not going to present the issue of direct sunlight into it.
But great connection to the outside.
And, yeah, great connection and also nice from the outside. A lot of activity that you're going to get.
Exactly. Almost like a beacon.
I like that.
I have to exit. For some reason, the slides don't show up very well. So jumping into the local items, there were a few questions that were raised in the past two meetings that weren't fully addressed. And so we spent some time pulling together information to address those. One of them was the theater size. The question has come up about what is the cost if we start to reduce seats within the theater? Currently, what's in the plan and what's in the budget is 1,200 seats. And so if we were to reduce that to 1,000 seats, so essentially taking 200 seats out, we reduce the overall cost by $500,000. If we take it down to 800, we reduce the overall costs by 1 million. So I just want to make sure that you understand it's not accumulative, that's 1 million off the total cost if we take it to 800. So essentially, every 200 seats you take out, you take about $500,000 off the cost. The operating costs that were presented at the last meeting, the question came up, what if we don't do cooling and heating with geothermal? So if we cool the traditional chill, what are cooling systems? We will increase the operating cost in comparison to what we showed at the last meeting by 87 cents per square foot. And so to Tom's earlier point, you start to see the efficiency of incorporating those systems within the building, especially with the state paying for half the cost of the system. It was brought to our attention after the last meeting that there was an error in our math of the interior finishes. So we apologize for that. The total that you saw on the summary slides was different than when you added up the individual items. And so we just wanted to clarify that the total number that was about 2.3 million is the correct number and not the 2.6. So that was a difference of about 246, 554. So the number has not gone up from that total. It's the one that you see in that summary.
I guess my question was, the items listed do add up to 2.6, so what's not on the list?
The entry area, I forget the title of it. Do you remember which one it was?
Yeah, the local lobby.
The lobby.
Lobby.
There was an error in that one.
And what part was that? The town square, the student commons, one of those is?
School town square.
Town square.
So you can X off, so much off from that one?
Yep.
Yeah. So the new value is 727,721.
727?
Yep, 721.
721 for the town square.
Yep.
That still doesn't, I still come up with 2.6 million, and you just added, took off 50,000.
That not get updated?
Oh, I don't know if that would have been.
Yeah, 779 for the town square and he brought down to 727.
Oh.
So it's what the intent was, and I, we apologize, we were updating this, the last slide we were updating. It doesn't look like it's saved properly.
Doesn't look like it's saved, right.
So the school town square essentially should be less than the number you were given before, by that amount. So we'll revise this slide when we send out the PDF of it.
This hasn't been revised.
No, unfortunately, it didn't save.
Right.
That was the intent. We were editing that slide and it didn't save.
That's the one item though that is updated in that amount.
Can't see anything.
Was there any other changes?
Nope.
So I apologize if you can't see this. For some reason, it's not when you go to presentation. So turf maintenance, the question was raised, what does it take to maintain the turf fields? So we reached out to a vendor that we've worked with in the past and he provided us a breakdown. Every six months, you need to groom the field, and this is assuming that you're hiring this out. And it's $2,500 plus or minus each time per field. You have to have regular attention to specific wear areas, brushing and infill windows place. And so to infill the. and so to infill the entire field, it's about $1,800 per time that you infill it. If you're doing magnetic or magnet service where if there are metal shards that end up in the field somehow that you want to be able to remove, that's $1,000 each time. And then field design pattern service, so different mill patterns shown within the synthetic turf, each different design each time it's done is about $1,500.
So that's a pure optional.
That's elective, exactly. If you decide you want to change.
Striping and.
Yep.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, as we met with the previous group, the suggestion was, can you show us a full comparative difference between the maintenance for natural grass and artificial turf?
And the other thing, that doesn't include the 10-year replacement, right?
Correct.
So that's like 100,000 a year, you got to add to the total cost when you think about it, because 10 years, we got to spend a million dollars to replace it, right?
No, because you're.
Think about it.
No, well, yeah, the actual turf layer too is all you're replacing, you're not replacing the subgrade.
All right, so that's about 400,000.
And things like that, so.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, are there any more add-ons, deltas on the finances?
This is the new, yeah, all the new information.
Adam, I'm going to throw this back out to you. Last week, we talked about a number of $1.27 increase to the mill rate inclusive of operational costs. Do you still feel comfortable with that number based upon any changes here? Not inclusive of any future turf upgrades or, because we're talking.
I haven't done anything with that and I hadn't seen these until today, but I think that number's close enough for discussion purposes, yeah.
Plus a minus a penny or two?
Yeah. I don't think it would be a big change.
Trivial with a penny or two on a mill rate, but we're within margin of error. Okay, very good, thank you, I just wanted to confirm that.
Any other questions on the, I guess we'll move to, oh, yep.
Yes, sir. I'm looking at your breakdown here, you've got a major problem. City manager is going to close the library permanently. And then, if you want to reopen it, you've got to go buy a piece of land and spend $20 million for the land.
Mr. Spencer?
The library.
No, sir.
And I'm going to ask the citizens of Auburn to put the $20 million cost of the new library ahead of the $22 million cost for the high school.
Absolutely.
So pump that $20 million in there.
So Mr. Spencer, thank you very much for that.
Oh, well, thank you, I appreciate you finally letting me talk.
Okay, so we'll go back to the presentation.
So the numbers again.
We're not, we're not closing the library.
Excellent, good point.
So the numbers that we presented last time here, the slide hasn't changed, this is the one that we identified, the local options. And so just going through those quickly again was the auditorium for 1,200 seats with, including the theatrical rigging, the lighting and sound equipment, tech shop, dressing rooms, theatrical storage, and that was a project cost of about 5.4 million, about 5.6 million from reading here, right? The stadium, as we talked about last time, includes artificial turf on the one field, the football field, includes grandstands, includes field lighting, includes the eight lane track, the increase from six to eight lanes, make sure that's clarified, concession building and irrigation. So those are the stadium items and as we talked about, there's a contingency in there for the dugouts as well.
Mark, excuse me, if we only, if we only did six lanes.
Yep.
What is the cost to add the two extra lanes?
I think we have that in the breakdown, yep, if we go to the breakdown on the slide four, there we are here. So it's about $100,000.
That's it to?
Difference.
Construction.
Right.
125 total project.
Say it again, please.
125. 100,000 construction, 125 total project.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm going to try and put this back in presentation.
Well, see, we'll try our luck here.
All right.
There we go. So backing up a little bit just to continue going through that list of, there we are. So the cost for all the local share items for this is 3.3 million dollars. And again, the state is paying for some of the basic field, they'll put, they'll put the field that we have for the football field there, they'll pay for the six lane track, but that's it. And so.
So when we get the state figures, we can have them side by side so we'll know what's going on with this? I mean, the state is paying for some of this, what are they paying for? You know, that's.
We're basically looking at the addition, the local option is what the state is now paying for.
I understand that, Tom, but to say that the state is going to pay for some of it, that puts a question out there, what is the state going to pay?
I'm going to throw out a bigger question. We got to start talking about numbers. We're capped on time here, we shouldn't be doing anything based upon time, but we've got here the mill rate and we've got to talk as a group and have that hard conversation I think before we even look at local or state. So we know what the big picture is and we got to hammer out on the big picture.
Sure, and to that, Mr. Mayor, would you like us to continue with these line items or do you want to break here and?
Actually, I think we need to look at the big picture versus, unless there's something, this is like the fourth time we've seen this.
Yep, yep.
So I'm really glad that we go through the deltas and the differences.
Yep.
But if I could, you know, Mr. Kendall and Katie, of course, but here's what, I'm going to start this conversation off. We've got about a buck 27 increase in mill rate with all local share approved inclusive of operation expenses. It's a reality, not going to, I'm not going to argue pro or con what the individual line items are that make that up. Substantially higher mill than we are first, you know, looking at, of course, when you factor in everything, but we got a number, that's good. We got to have a target based upon my conversation with the members of the public and the councilors, we got to be close to 75 cent increase on the mill rate. So I do not, my desire would be not to look at anything within the plan right now and value engineer those things out. I think that is an option of last resort, so to speak, when everything else is exhausted. I think this is a combination of work on the city and the school side, but we've have to figure out ways in order to cut this mill rate down to a more palatable 0.75. Which would, just to put it in terms that you've used before, Mr. Kendall, it's about 100 and, I just had it written down, $111 per $150,000 house, $127. Oh, here we go. It is $112 for $150,000 house annual increase. So that's what I have, so let's go talk.
If we could, we review the first page, this is the second page, I think we should review this page as part of this discussion and then go from that.
So I'm feeling a bit of time because I don't want to keep on the clock.
I was totally confused through the last meeting.
Yeah, me too.
That we have a, you know, the base bid, but then go into the next page. Then all of a sudden we add program space, get to 21, additional local items and I guess, and again, I think it comes down to what are we going to the public with? This page totally confused me and I think it'll confuse the public. So I think this page needs to be explained to us and hopefully the public hears the thing.
All right, let's see what I can do in that regard. Building committee felt that presenting what we considered, and the building committee made up of citizens decided was, this is what the school should be, this is what we think we should promote to the community as a total package. That did not include the geothermal or the second turf field, but it did include, it did include the additional program space at this point in time. Now we're still discussing that with the state. But the geothermal heating and cooling and the second turf field we felt should be a separate question. They can be, they're options, let's call them. There are options out there that the building committee felt was not necessary to the base package we felt this community deserved. So everything, if you go back to the base, the one before, we say, when you're voting on this, we think you should vote on this, total package, one number, this is what the school is. If you decide, which we feel in the second page, that geothermal has a payback of three years and you are willing to support that, then that should be a second question, shouldn't be in the base bid, because you don't have to have geothermal. But that one would keep our cost down long-term, we think it's a saleable item, we can convince the community that a three-year payback on that, the state has come forward, and this was after we had decided to go forward, saying that would cover about half of it. That made it extremely reasonable. We did not add it into the base bid, we still think that is something the community should weigh in on. Are they saying geothermal is an appropriate way to climatize this entire building? The second turf field is again, total option, we don't have to have it, we don't, the athletic committee said, that would be great to have, but do we absolutely need it? No. We can have the cost of maintaining a regular grass field and we can, we'll have one turf field which we feel is necessary to support the sports within this community. So that was the reason those two were held out and not included in what we considered the base bid.
Okay, just a reaction to that.
Yep.
And the problem I had with it, going first to the second turf field, I read that, we're voting on whether we're going to have a second turf field. Really, we're talking about, do we want an art, second artificial field?
Artificial, right.
So the wording I think is misleading. Two, when we talk about in the base bid, climate control, whole building AC, a lot of people were going to, I kind of assumed we've already built the geothermal into that and we haven't, but I, but breaking it up and voting on different numbers, I think we're going to confuse people and in the end, we're going to have a lot of people very upset because they're thinking one number that they voted for, others are going to vote for some other numbers and it's going to get mixed up and to me, nobody's going to end up being happy.
Nobody's going to vote for it if we don't get the mill rate down. So.
I guess what I'm coming to somehow.
You're right, let's get the bill right down and then talk about language.
Well, that's right. Mr. Mayor, I just, I just had a couple of things I wanted to bring up. First of all, I know that it isn't popular to talk about doing less and it hasn't been through the entire discussion. I mean, we want to get the best school we can and that's what I've heard from everybody.
We're not going to talk about value engineering right now, are we?
No, no, but I'm just saying that there are options to build that, that great school and not do $23 million, but we don't want to talk about what the options are, we're afraid to. We want the auditorium, but the auditorium, I don't care, it's not going to pay for the bond and we already have an enterprise fund in this city that if we didn't have to worry about paying shot for it, we'd make money at it, but we have to pay for the building and it's the same with the auditorium. Yeah, there can be an enterprise fund that's going to help pay for the operating expenses, but we still have the bond and to pay for the building that will never get paid for that. So we have to consider a lot of things. But this is what I'm going to put out just for the record and then maybe we should either talk about it or not talk about it.
Just, Counselor Titus, can we talk about, before we start looking at taking assets away, how can the school department of the city make cuts on something else in order to justify the payments first and then go there? There's always, there's a process.
But the problem I have with that is that we're voting, you guys, the school committee is voting on the 6th of March and we got to vote on the 11th of March to go with this and send it to referendum. We don't have any time to be thinking about.
We would have time if we followed the process. We've got to talk about ops.
So. Do you have a number?
I have some numbers.
You have a number?
Yeah.
That you would like to see because it's not, I think if you have a number, right or wrong, small or big, I think it needs to go back to the building committee that has worked on it for two years and let the building committee and the subcommittees.
Yeah, yeah. Jason, Jason makes an excellent point.
I hear you, Jason, but I want to hear.
Do you have a number, Bonnie?
No, you gave me.
75 cents of the mill rate.
No. No, I want to know what the bottom number is, just like we do on a, on a budget. What's the budget? Did you have a bottom number?
I mean, but the thing was, the, all through this process, I, two years ago, I said, we got to start talking about budgets and I always said, no, we got to wait until the end to talk about budgets and now we don't want to talk about budgets, so, you know.
What budget are you talking about? Are you talking about our annual budget or are you talking about this budget?
No, I'm talking about what we're going to bond for.
For this project?
Right.
All right, so give us a number and let us go back to the building committee and see what they can come up with.
We'll have time to do that.
Will we do? Oh, come on, guys, give us a number.
Dan. What about the city manager, what does he think we should be at a mill rate increase to, I mean, comparatively to the other departments in the city?
Well, I mean, it's not about.
We're only one department.
I will say, it's not about total. I mean, we got, and that 75 cents is a mix of operations and the actual building, which we're trying to take into consideration. Obviously, operations are not something you bond, you know, your teacher salaries and maintenance as we talked about. So finding the number, Katie's going to find the actual number, but it's really fair and easily to, easy to understand what the increase in the mill rate, you know, to your point, is inclusive of annual operating, non-bonded issues or items? So that's why the mill rate is an important number to focus on versus a dollar amount to be bonded, because it doesn't take into consideration your ongoing annual expenses. But we'll try to get that number, but the point is, how can we all cut a little bit? We all know that a zero increase in the mill rate is really what the taxpayers want.
But that's the, that's the annual budget, Jason. That's not this budget, right?
Well, no, Bonnie, at the end of the day, how many checks do you write per year to the city? You write two, right? Maybe one, okay? It doesn't matter, it's one bill. So we have to look at it very holistically as one bill, that's the reality. I mean, so when we look at that, what does that mean? What's that, is that a sustainable increase? I think that by going through this process and understanding what the true numbers are, that people will pay more, okay? The majority of people will. We think 75 cents or $112 on a $150,000 home annual as an increase in taxes is doable, could be off, you could ask 100 people, you're going to get 100 different answers, but this is from hearing from everybody, it seems to be the middle ground, the median, okay? How do you get there though? Operational cuts, consolidations, efficiencies on the municipal and the school side would be opportune, because then you wouldn't have to cut anything that we've seen up here. If we can't get to that point, then we might have to value engineer some cuts, maybe it goes from 1,200 to 1,000, you know? Whatever the case is, at that point, I agree with you, Bonnie, it goes back to the school committee or the building committee.
I think Jason is making an excellent point is, how do we, how do we deal with this total cost throughout the whole community, throughout the whole city?
Total cost of what, Tom?
The total cost of putting up a new high school.
Thank you.
Okay? So the total cost right now, if we're looking at, you know, 1.27 mill rate increase, that's what we expect this cost to be. That's going to be mitigated by a number of things, whether we've got economic development that goes on, so the result and impact, total impact when it comes down to when you get your tax bill, is going to be something other than that. Jason's saying, what are those things going to be? What do we around this table think can be done to impact that tax bill when it comes forward? Where do you either reduce operating costs, where do you make consolidations, where do you either share this, don't do that, do this, whatever, so that the total cost of city operations and school operations is reduced? Because we know the increase for what we want for this community, for this school, is going to cost us, say, $1.27 on the mill rate. There are things that this community can do, you know, stop snow plowing, okay, it's going to cut things down, you're not going to do that.
Okay, let's hear some of those ideas.
Some of those ideas, well, that's why we're here, we are, we are the body.
Well, actually, the two of you that have to start that dialogue and put some things on the table, because obviously we haven't been engaged in that conversation.
That's where we want this workshop to come from, okay? I have a couple of ideas, I'll say them right now. I want to take city-owned property, I want to take city-owned property that's not being completely utilized through an asset, there's certain parking lots that are gravel, whenever we tear down a building, we just turn it into parking. I want to make, I want to give that away to developers, if not sell, in order to get future tax revenues, which then can offset through commercial property some of this mill rate, okay? Is it my power to identify those properties? No, I've talked to the city manager about looking at those, absolutely, okay? That's one thing on the municipal side. Second thing, I believe that consolidating field maintenance, ground maintenance, plowing between the city and the school under the municipal budget will provide cost savings, cost savings. I do not know what they are, we have a joint resolution we passed some months ago to look at that. I really want a good study on that. It's painful, nobody likes to talk about it, but that's one option. Tom, I'll leave it up to you for some others. And then, want to hear more, people start thinking about this.
Dan. The only problem with that is we don't have the time, there's no time for that, to research that within, what, three weeks?
But what's the big rush?
Why couldn't we like build the school and then, I mean, you don't have to build the fields now, you can do them later, but the school is there, the auditorium is there, I mean, football field, we already have a football field, I mean, it'd be nice to have a new one, but we have one. I mean, it'd be nice to have a new one, but we have one.
The state's gonna approve it as a project, Dan?
Well, no, you can still do the field, but you don't put, don't put the turf. You know, you do the basics on the fields, but-
Don't do the locals.
But, yeah, for the locals. But the building itself, you know, leave the auditorium, leave all the stuff on the basic building.
We're not talking about operations, Counselor.
Right. But that's the only way you're gonna cut. If you don't, if you're building a house, if you, I mean, you have to cut-
Let's use the house analogy. We're building a house, okay? You know that you can get architectural shingles for $3 a square foot or you can get regular asphalt for $2.50, okay? That is a value engineer cut in your home design, right? Or you could say, "Listen, I want timers on all my, uh, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal the cable off my neighbor and not, and save 50 bucks a month." That is an operational cut. So let's talk about how we're stealing cable from our neighbors.
And what you're asking for, Mr. Mayor, what you're asking for is approximately 50 cents off the mill rate using, using cuts from city and school budget. So you want in the school, the school budget, in the city budget to cut their, not spend more money this coming year, but actually cut to reduce the mill rate by 50 cents after the school's bill.
Increase to-
That's what you're asking.
For our, so now we're mixing, and I know we only get one tax bill. I understand that, I'm not dumb.
Right.
Okay? But we're going to take and get, we're going to take the annual budget and we're gonna cut it 50 cents. You're saying?
Well, if the only way that you're gonna take 1.27 down to 80 cents is-
But we're not building this school and we're not bonding for another two years or three years.
Right, but we're committed to it, so we have to get there. Whether we do it this year or next year, we've committed to the 23 million, so we have to go through the plan of cutting expenses to equal 50 cents on the mill rate. That's what he's proposing.
So you guys got good cuts coming? Because we, we've-
I'm just telling you what I'm hearing.
We're main, we're maintaining.
Just telling you what I'm hearing, see?
What you're, what you're hearing, Andy?
That's what I'm hearing.
Well, let me tell you that I'm not hearing that. And I don't, I guess I don't go in the same crowd as you do because I'm not hearing that. I hear is that this is a once-in-a-lifetime project for us. Do it right and we'll pay for it. I'm hearing from old people, I'm hearing from young people, I'm hearing from middle-aged people. Do it right and we will get it done.
Right, no, one of the things, what I'm hearing from the mayor and from Tom is that we need to, to pay, go from 1.27 down to 80 cents on the mill rate. The only way you can do it is cut expenses.
No, that's not the only way, Andy. If, if you can, if you can increase your economic development, if you can sell the property and it becomes tax, taxable property, if you can generate more tax revenue from the assets within the city, then the mill rate goes down.
Well, it's not enough of that. I've been doing, we've been working on that project.
Yeah, it's a combination of those things.
As to be bold, not just-
Not enough land in the city of Auburn to make a difference.
But in the meantime, I think that's a goal that we need to press forward with, certainly as we get into budget this year, next year, and beyond. Every year, we've gotta look at that. Right now, we've gotta come up with a figure that we can take to the public. We may wanna take, say that we're now at 1.27. Maybe back to the school board, back to the building committee, we say, "Well, we gotta, we gotta do something. We gotta do some value engineering with these numbers because we gotta go to the public with the numbers."
Right.
So I don't think, I don't think around the table that we're excited about taking that 23 million total to the public right now.
Yeah.
So I think that the school committee, I think, has to reassemble, consider some of the discussion they've heard around this table as well as from the public and say, "Okay, should we look at this? Maybe we should approach it a little bit differently. Maybe we should do some things a little differently as, as far as the local options."
I think Bob is right, and I think Tom Kendall's right, too. We should go back to the building committee who spent many years and many hours on this and come up with X amount of things we can cut from this to make the mill rate fit.
Yes, Peter.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that, you know, the points that everyone is making are important points. Katie has a meeting tomorrow with the Department of Education to talk about the project that's already been mentioned. I know one of the issues that's being talked about is a square footage issue. We don't know what's gonna happen regarding that. We'll have more information after that meeting. We have a fundraising effort that's underway. We don't know what's gonna happen regarding that. I think 3 to 4 million was raised for the library, if I remember correctly, from the local community. I don't know what is possible regarding the high school, but, the new high school, but I'm sure that funds can be raised. We have, as I've said before, the Maine Legislature, which is considering a local option sales tax as well as increasing municipal revenue sharing, increasing state aid to education. We know what the governor has put in her legislation for, for the budget the next two years, but we don't know what the legislature's decision will be at this point. Regarding the local option sales tax, I've spoken about that before. That would generate 7.6 million annually for the city of Auburn. That is a considerable amount of non-tax revenue that could be used to pay for a new high school and could be used to lower the property tax and could be utilized for other things as well. Ed Barrett, the city administrator for Lewiston, and I will be speaking to the Lewiston-Auburn Metro Chamber breakfast on March 11th, talking about the impact on both our communities as communities that have a lot of demand for our services, as service center communities. We are also going to be continuing our efforts at the state level. A group of us have met with the president of the Maine State Chamber of Commerce, Dana Connors, also Cliff Grime, who's the incoming chairman, to talk about this issue. We're gonna be meeting with the Maine State Chamber of Commerce Board. I think there are a number of things that are in play that can help with this issue that we're talking about this evening. I think it's, from my perspective, I think we need a little more time to see what, what is going to happen regarding the Department of Education and some other issues that are taking place that are really outside of our control at this point.
Tom?
Yeah, go ahead, Father.
I, I agree with you, Peter, that the Department of Ed, we need to wait and see. Hopefully, we'll have some answers tomorrow, better understanding tomorrow. As far as all the other things you said, is that I think those are fantastic. And they can be utilized after the fact to reduce the cost as well as before the fact to reduce the cost on it. To put, I don't understand why we need to put this off until September for a referendum. I don't get it because it's, we, as Katie has said many times-
It's gonna pass, Bonnie.
I bet it will.
We're late, oh.
I bet it will.
Do we have a fiduciary responsibility?
I, I understand that, Jason. I understand it probably better than you because I've been sitting here a while, a long time, okay?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, look at the mess we're in now. So before this tomorrow-
Well, thank you, Jason.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, let's take it down. There, there are, there are several camps out there in this community. There are those that are very supportive of the design and the costs that are out there. There's those that Andy hears from that are concerned about the increase in the mill rate. There are definitely both sides of the issue being presented. The, what we hear, certainly, we're hearing from the billing committee and the community when we go to public forums, they're all in support of this. So that we're hearing a different voice than what you're hearing from. We also understand that the city council has responsibility, fiduciary, whatever, that we manage the finances of this community appropriately and we do it respectfully of, of the citizens that are here. The citizens that we are hearing from say, "Do this" because they know, or they know, they suspect, that the benefits that come from a facility that we are proposing to build will assist in the economic development, deal with some of those issues in the mill reading increase, and help this community grow. Because this community absolutely has to grow, as Jason has put it out many times. We've gotta grow, and this is one of the key, keystones. It's, it's a cornerstone of how you build a community, how we regenerate interest in Auburn, is we've gotta put out there a, a school that will attract people, that will educate the students so they become a, a workforce that employers wanna come here to employ. As a, as a community, as, as we hear from those that are interested in the education of our students, that's what we hear, is this, this is, this is our one shot to really do it. And it is the turning point. It is going to be that factor that changes the direction of Auburn. Auburn has been going this way for 30 years, and it needs to turn around. And we think that doing this right, doing what's here and what we hear from, is that turning point.
Tom, I think 23 million is a heck of a lot of money. I agree with that. And I think it should go back to the building committee, as somebody said here, go back to the building committee and filter it out and then come back and see what the price is. Or give us a price that you want us to be at.
I mean, I, I really think, first of all, you know, school buildings are not gonna, uh, school buildings are not gonna create a better educational, they're not gonna make better test scores automatically, they're not gonna make graduation rates go up automatically. We see new schools, I've done some studies on many of them, where things didn't change or actually went down after a new school was built. But having the new school will attract more people, more economic development. That's an important thing. There's a ways that we can pare these numbers down or find a way to work for it that may not be 23 million, but we haven't even looked at them, haven't wanted to look at it because they're sacred cows. No, don't cut this, don't cut that, they're sacred cow. We don't wanna talk about those, but we can still have a great school with a $15 million bond and be very proud of it if we wanted to sit down and look at it. But we don't even wanna look down.
I can buy you 15 million, but I wanna go back to the building committee-
Absolutely. They should be the one to make that choice, but we're on-
And do it.
We're up against the gun because the 6th of March, you guys are gonna need to vote on this, and on the 11th, we need to vote on it before it goes to referendum, so.
Is there a, a, a really overriding reason why we can't wait? Because I think some of the things that the, that the city manager mentioned could be determined by June, by the end of the, so I just, I, I don't-
Yeah, a couple of things that it does impact. And, and it can have a significant impact or it may not. And I can't say one way or the other. But your bid process, going out to contractors to build this, one, is delayed. Your building window, timeframe when they can start building, could get delayed a whole season. And the further you delay, general economic situation is, costs go up. So that any delay that we put into this has, could have, I won't say it does, could have a significant impact on the total cost of this. That's what we're trying to avoid partly. We also feel that we have, we have the community behind, we feel it, I'm sorry. We feel we have the community behind this and that a June referendum will pass. And we just don't know what that number is going to be yet. We are working on that, and we hear you. We're not deaf. This building committee has heard it, the designs are there. We are, we are working on this. We are taking forward and bringing forward what this community has told us they want. And we now have a reasonable figure. We are trying to pare down, say, "What is the state going to do for us here? Where are we?" We don't know that yet to come back and say, "All right, this is the number." We feel we're getting very close to that. We're going to be able to say, "This is the number." We're going to be able to come to you as a city councillor and say, "This is what, we feel the community is ready to support, what the state is gonna pay for, what we need is a local option to pay for." We don't have that number yet. We are still working on it. So we don't wanna delay it. We're looking at, at the feedback we are getting, saying, "We're ready to do this. Why, why wait? We wish it was built, you know, being built next year." So that's what we hear. You hear something different. And we think there's that compromise in between. Yes, Alfredo?
I have heard some things different in terms of, you know, fears from some citizens who are not able to pay their taxes. Now it's very hard for them to pay taxes. But they're not opposed to having a new school because their children have gone through the school system. My children have gone through the school system. We want the best school we can get. Everybody agrees with that, they really do. But I think that, I've been involved in four school building projects in my lifetime as, as an educator. And I know that there is not a need to rush something if the numbers are not correct. My concern is the numbers, the figures, the state stats, that we need to know exactly what we're dealing with before we make that decision because those are the questions that we're having right now. There are some figures that were put up there and it's an approximate plus or minus. Well, plus or minus can make a big difference. So I think if we have, I would like to see costing out, like, for example, the turf. Turf versus, you know, working it with regular soil. I mean, if you analyze those two and see there's a difference, then it tells you something and it helps you to make a decision about that. I do believe that everybody wants to do the right thing, but if we can, if we have pieces of information that we need that will impact a cost figure, one way or another, if we can, you know, dig into it and say, "Okay, what else do we need to look at?" That's going to tell us more information before we go forward. And I, too, believe 23 million is way too much.
Holly?
I think a basic misunderstanding is that we could have a $23 million school but have the mill rate not be 1.27. We could have a $23 million school and have the mill rate be 0.95. And the way we do that is we, do we have fewer plow drivers? I'm just pulling things out of thin air. Do we have fewer teachers? Do we have fewer support staff in the school? Do we have fewer people who are working in city government? I think that's the basic misunderstanding. So you could have this school with absolutely everything if we're willing to work together and think about what are the things that we as a community are willing to do without?
Mm-hmm, right.
And that conversation will take some time.
And more than postponing from June to September.
That won't take years, right?
It's gonna take years, literally. It's gonna take several budget cycles to come to that. We have to make a decision on the school now.
Yep, okay. And then we have two years before it impacts.
You've got, so you've got that period of time to manage that, to develop that and find out where can you make these savings? Where can you impact the city services that might impact mill rate? Because it's not gonna hit us for two years.
But we have to have at least a starting off point that's tangible on day one.
Right.
I can agree, I can agree. I don't, I don't necessarily agree two years. I, I mean, there's no company in the world that runs on a two-year budget, right? They do it annually if not more regularly, right? Um, so that can be truncated. But we do, I agree, it will take a little bit more time post-election. But we have to have something that we can have and show the people, "This is what we've done, A, B, C, D," to Holly, your point. Thank you for summarizing that. This is what we've done. This is gonna have an impact. This is what we're gonna continue to do. And that we have to obviously stick with.
True. So we could still target June for the vote. Through this budget process upcoming that we have quite started yet, staff has, council, I'm not sure just where the school board is, but council already has. board is, but councillor already has. So, we can start that, we can demonstrate that we're moving in that direction. But I think as far as the vote, whether we move ahead with the school, needs to be decided in June.
Yes, Leroy.
This whole thing needs to go back to the, to the building committee, to get their reflection on it. They certainly heard some discussion.
They meet Tuesday.
Wouldn't it be a shame, though, wouldn't it be a shame if we had, the building committee came back, because we had to get this in June, and they cut our auditorium to 400 seats in order to meet a number, and then all of a sudden, we found it, we found voted, we found more money, and then, damn.
Jason, let's be realistic. We've been through several budget periods. Ain't gonna happen. Ain't gonna happen.
And frankly, that's a lack of imagination.
No, no, we can work on it, certainly, but you're not gonna get from 127 down to .75.
Hey. Leroy.
That's one way, that's a penny off the mill rate right there. You know, but that attitude, though, I think, going into anything, it's self-evident. We can't, if we really think about it, I mean, if we all think right now that we can't, this is one of the reasons we have a hard time, citizen participation, and we're even having this conversation about something getting passed, is because the people don't see us doing what they have to do every single day. They're gonna have to make some hard cuts, when their taxes go up by $112 a year, okay? We owe it to them to do the same. We owe it to them to think differently, create something, okay, to do something differently than what it was before. Okay, Einstein, same thing over and over, you're never gonna get a different result.
Tell me, Jason, what services is that same, those same constituents gonna give up?
What ser, what services are they gonna give up? Well, you know, if there's one, this is gonna buy us back to actually cutting the cord. More and more people are getting, are getting rid of terrestrial cable. City of Auburn actually gets money on a per-monthly basis for cable. That money we use towards Great Falls TV, offsetting costs of our IT department. That's revenue that's gonna be decreasing. It's a push-pull. $112 bucks, cut the cord, save the money that way. Less money for us. So, that's why.
But let's get back to talking this, a new school that we desperately need.
Yes.
I'm not willing to postpone a full building season, and I think that's probably what would result. We're not guarantee, even if we postponed it to September, whether that's gonna be a referendum that will pass. I think we need to go to a referendum, being confident with a figure that can be come up with in June. It may, even that may not pass, and we may still have to go to September. But if we wait until September, I'm fearful that we go beyond.
But if we bring, but if we bring a number to them, and the number has been worked somehow, so that there is a reduction, we stand the chance of it really passing versus not passing.
But at the same time, Alfredo, we're kind of basing, we wanna stay with 23, we're kinda saying, we can make cuts, and promise you that we will make the cuts, that we can live with that. I think that's a harder thing to sell to the public than working down this figure now, getting a school that we'll be proud of, get it in a more timely, according to a more timely schedule.
But I'm talking about working the figure down.
Yeah, but, that's right. No, you weren't.
Yes, no, I am talking about, I didn't say 23 million is, is perfect for a local, that's too much.
Kind of what Jason, our mayor, has suggested, is that let's try to stay with this figure, get the best we can, put the full money into it. We will cut on the other side, we will pair services, or we'll make some coordination and so forth.
But if those decisions are going to be made, and when we're looking at that and analyzing that, it's gonna take a little bit of time, I'm not saying the whole.
And that's a promise to the community. Are they gonna believe that, or are they gonna believe a number that we've worked with to get it down to something that is acceptable to the community to begin with?
And then hopefully, then it would be voted in, not down. It would be much better knowing that, and then we won't lose extra time, because we have to go back.
Right. So there's your June date.
One, one thing, and just, and then I wanna get to Leroy, one thing is, we will know a figure that will come before us next month. So, the community will have a number at that point in time. And I can't say it'll be this number, what number it will be, but we will have a number, it'll be done. So, Leroy.
I just wanna make a couple little comments. I, I can remember sitting around these tables four years ago, wishing that the state would fund a new high school for the city of Auburn. I remember all talking about that, and everyone was gunghole, they were gonna do that. Now the state said they're gonna do that, we want better than what they're gonna give us. I say, we know they're gonna build us a school, let's build that school, and anything we want beyond it, let's sell it to the community. I don't think we need to change what the state is gonna build us. We just need to make sure that there's enough money in the next few years to build the other things that we want. And if the one gym or one auditorium is the biggest thing we want, then let's shoot for that one big thing. But I don't think we need to take this school that the state's gonna build, and turn it into a $15 million bond this year.
Leroy, if you're gonna put a heating and cooling system in, that's gonna pay for itself in three years, isn't that a smart thing to do?
If you can prove to me that it's gonna do that, yes, but I don't, I don't just want someone to say, well, we think it's gonna, or maybe in three years it will. You don't know what's down below there, once they drill these holes, we may have a gas pit down there. Who's gonna tell us it isn't, or it is?
That would be good news.
Then we'll get a great, yeah, that will be golden. There you go.
Yes, Andy?
Well, just one question on the geothermal, 'cause you had said 87 cents was the extra cost if we didn't do geothermal. Based on the square footage, that's $200,000 a year we would save. On a $1.4 million bond, how does that pay for itself in seven years? I mean, in three years. You said three years. How does it pay for itself? It's a $1.4 million local share, with a $200,000 savings every year. How do you, how do you pay back a $1.4 million bond? We kept saying three. Everybody tonight said three.
It was gonna be seven if the state, if we were paying the whole thing, yeah.
We always put a range on it, because until we had those numbers established, just that's the exact number.
So it's a seven years. It technically is, I mean, $200,000 a year, and with no other maintenance on the geothermal or anything we gotta do in 10 years, in 10 years it does pay itself, in six, seven years it pays for itself, as long as there's no other expenses involved with the geothermal. So, just wanted to make that point.
Tom, might we know tomorrow if the DOE has agreed to pay for the extra program space?
More likely to be the week, next week, not, not tomorrow's meeting.
This is what the timeline, as we see it, is, tomorrow's a big meeting, they know we're pushing hard on the program space. Are they gonna pay for all that? They will not. But there, there's high negotiations right now, they talked with us a lot yesterday about it. They know how important that number is to us, we reiterate it again, 'cause remember the, 'cause I think, Bob, you asked, that program space is because we're over the square footage allowance. A lot of that was caused because we had to bring the mechanicals in. The state used to allow vents on top, you know, when you walk, go by a school, and there's these big vents, like, they are pushing to have them in buildings now. And they're, they're calculating it towards our square footage. We're making the argument that we're getting penalized for that. They understand that. So what they're trying to do is say, okay, what have we, what have we agreed to at this point, what have we not agreed to, and we're still pushing and pulling, okay? And Scott Brown and his team's been great partnering with us. Herrmann's working on, you know, I think probably 48 hours every 48, to get ready for your meetings tonight. So that is under high negotiations, that number. Tomorrow, they know how much we need it. They know the votes are coming up, so we're pushing on that. So we see numbers being more concrete tomorrow, building committee is next Tuesday, and we have a joint meeting with all of you again at 5:30 next Wednesday. So we should have, instead of a guessing thing, I mean, remember, we're doing 25% markup. We don't know what the bids are yet, we don't know what's coming in yet. I mean, that's, that's a whole nother process. We don't know what fundraising is, we don't know what revenue is, the impact of that. What I, what I, city manager's heard me say this, what I would hate is we're doing 11 million local bond, and people drive up and say, what did I get for my dollars? Right? I mean, you, you would need the breaker point of, what are we gonna get for our dollars? My taxes went up, I went by, I didn't see anything that, that was that thrilling to me. But if I'm gonna pay, and I see, wow, I can do this, I get this, we are bringing in this kind of revenue, then I feel like you've made the investment with my dollars. So I think we have to be careful that we don't undermark ourselves, and then we're not even competitive in the area of what we're offering. We have to be forward-thinking, we don't wanna be short-sighted in what we can bring to this community with the new high school.
Just, just quickly, I wanna say, so a week from now, we can have some more substantive numbers.
Exactly, oh yeah, absolutely.
So it's worth waiting, backing off a little bit, I think, and next week, thinking about the questions that have come up, and knowing, even if it's $3 million, that could be significant. And I know how hard you guys are fighting, or negotiating, so maybe that's one of the things that we need to think about, that next week.
No, you're right, Holly, absolutely, that's what we want.
And it's, and we'll know, none of this other stuff will we know within a week. That's one number that we'll know about, hopefully in a week, yeah.
And you will see, once the numbers released, the DOE is very tight on numbers. Once they release the numbers, I think somebody brought it up, what, what are we getting from the state? Because you offer, you're gonna, I think Bonnie said, you will have the ledger. This is what the state's paying for, this is what the local. They won't release that right now, because we're in high negotiations on space. Remember, they have to be fair and equitable. So the minute they release us, every school that's being built right now is gonna say, what did Auburn just get?
Right, right, we're not the only school, so they have to be fair.
Right, they have to be fair. So, they're pushing us to think, they've been responding amazingly. Something as small that you don't understand is that auditory, the auxiliary gym, we had some space in there that we massaged to put a PE classroom in there, so that we could save some space for students to drop things off. So we're trying to be creative when they say, can you just look at this one more time? They were very pleased to see the practice field move. That practice field would cost the state over $700,000 for a practice field. They, they said, can you look and shift? They're willing to have us move and pay for extra blasting, because it's saving money. So we're working with them, and, and getting a lot of kudos for everything we've said, we've examined. So Holly, you're absolutely right. I didn't, and I think the mayor, we've all said, we don't wanna push for cuts and stuff, we don't know the solid answers yet. So we're hoping by next joint meeting, we will have more solid numbers. I mean, the DOE knows we need the numbers.
That would be great for them.
Can I ask a question I didn't ask last week?
Sure.
When you showed us the figures about the square footage presently, and the square footage in the future, as proposed, and you said the cost of heating or whatever at that time, were you giving the figures of the entire school, including the regional
Yes, no, no, we were not.
You were not, it didn't?
T was not included.
Was not included. But, a question about the, the regional end of it.
Yes.
We, other than getting our students being able to have placement in that program, does the, do we get administrative type of thing, or whatever?
Yes, so, we get a percentage, Adam, 5%, what was the percent?
5.6.
5.6% state dollars will come for the operation of the CTE. So the career and technical part, they pay for the positions, the teachers, they give us a portion for operational costs for that area. We also will have another administrative position to oversee the program. The state has agreed to put in an office for a student service representative as, position. So anything related to the CTE comes with revenue funding through the state. So we will be the financial, right now Lewiston runs all the finances for the Lewiston Regional Technical Center. We will be the fiscal agent for the satellite. That means when we get our ED279s, our revenue, they will have that cost built in. So there will be a line that says CTE, and we will be given a percentage for our operational costs.
And that goes on annually?
That goes annual, exactly. So like a custodian, Adam spoke to, one of the custodian positions would put, be put against the CTE revenue.
I was hoping that you'd tell me that we weren't be losing money on it.
Losing money on the CTE?
Losing money on the operation. There'd be some other benefits other than just our, our students being able to have placement.
I mean, what's nice about having a CTE program is adult ed trainings for companies. Rob Callahan does that currently in Lewiston, is you can offer evening things, so companies that might wanna use our facilities for training, may use that. So you do partner a lot with that space, that it's not just for students, it can be also for adults. So that's a benefit.
Because of what's in those spaces, because it's highly technical, and they need that type of thing.
Katie, is there any positive immediate results for fundraising?
We are, what you, what, what you learn is, fundraise, it's hard to raise money when people don't know what you're raising money for. Right now, we're not at a number, we're not at a project. So you can't say, wow, look at what we're building, we want you to invest in that, we're not there yet. But we're in the organization of a fund committee, fundraising committee, working on, with possible donors to jumpstart. So, we've been talking a lot about where to start. I've been meeting with people who have been good at fundraising, so that, to get advice, reaching out to folks. So that is definitely in the works. I mean, we're committed to raising, you know, 3 to 5 million if we can, to offset the, the mill rate and the cost of the school.
So in theory, if I could, let's say you raised 2 million.
Right.
The state ships in 4 million, that's 7 million.
Right, they're seven, right.
Say we went to 23, okay, we deducted 7 million, a combination of fundraising and state program space aid. We could in theory have what we want, if it's up there, but still keep that mill increase, including of operations, rough math, at like 85, 90 cents. Now, I still think, I know, 'cause there's always something that, if you think about it long enough, you can gain some economy of scale, and some efficiencies, with an adjoint municipal school budget, in order to bring that down even further. That's the fiduciary responsibility that we need to do. And frankly, you know, if you think about it, it happens all the time, okay? And we could do that. Now, is it a lot of work? Yes. Do we have enough time? I don't know, okay? But we do have to have a plan versus just the talk and the rhetoric, to bring to people, because they need to see it. And unfortunately, our predecessors, on both sides, have broken way too many promises to the city, both real and perceived, to the residents of the city. So our, the trust factor here, you know, is minimal. We, we're the victim of our predecessors' actions. And I hate to say that, but that's where we're fighting, okay? And it's not fair to our future students. But that's the reality, and we have to acknowledge reality, and we have to do the work. So that's, that's my take on. I would like to see, and, you know, talking about value engineering, and talking about programs, I'd like to turn over to Andy, he had something else to say earlier.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate everybody's thoughts of growing into it, but I feel as though we have to have the hard conversations of the other way, which maybe we don't have to grow into it so much. So I'm gonna throw a proposal now, nobody throw any apples or pears or whatever, until I'm done, 'cause it's probably gonna scare the hell out of you at first. But, I'm gonna use rough numbers now. 23 million is what we're talking about right now. Okay, the, let's just say the program space either gets paid for, or it disappears. But let's say it gets paid for, so that's off. We don't do the 1,200 seats. We don't do geothermal, 'cause like I said, it looks like it's a seven-year payout, and that doesn't pay the interest on the 1.4 million bond. So it's probably a 10-year payout before we break even on geothermal. Then we take out parking spaces, because we won't need as many, because we won't have a 1,200-seat auditorium of $400,000. The second turf, artificial turf, doesn't need to be there, that's $700,000. And then the concession building, at almost a million dollars. Now that comes to $8 million if I take those things out. Whatever, let's add back some things, like concessions. Instead of a million dollars for a concession building, let's build a $500,000 building, and have fundraising to get the additional money we need to put in if we want a professional kitchen, or sets of bathrooms that are gonna be ADA compliant, and all that, the extras. We put in 1.4 or 5 million back into the theater, because I want my students to have the experience. I was in music myself, my children were band, music, theater, they can have the full experience with all the equipment in a 400-seat theater, instead of a 1,200-seat theater, and still have the same experience. I mean, they can still have plays, they can still work it, and when they leave, they're gonna be well-versed in lighting and how that works. That comes out to $10 million, right there, a little over $10 million doing it that way. Now, there's more to add, because I'm at 10 million, I'm not at 15, right? So now we can say, what else can we put in there that can be value-added to bring it up to what is a palatable number? But just taking these out, I know everybody wants the 1,200 seats, but, you know, the, the enterprise funds don't always work out. And the program space is $64.4 million. Well, if the state pays for three, let's settle for the three they give us, for extra program space. So that was my thought. I know I, I just, I don't wanna deflate any balloons, but I'm just thinking, this is creative thought process, I was hoping we would have long before now. Now we add stuff back in, and we come up with 1.7 million, maybe everybody is happy then.
Andy, I agree with you. And I, as I said earlier, the 23 million is a lot of money, and I think it needs to go back to the building committee, and let them do what you just said to do. Because they work these numbers, they work the, the whole program, and let the building committee deal with it. And then come back and see what they've got on it. I think that to sit here and say, this, and this, and this.
We can't in one meeting.
We can't. But let, let us, the building committee, who's worked with it for two years, come back and tell you what we can do and what we can't do.
Right.
Do they have all the numbers that they need in terms of?
Do we have all the numbers? Yeah, we have all the numbers. We have everything. We, we created the numbers with them, so we know what's going on.
One thing I think, though, also to be aware of, is that when you take away or change something, there's a cascading effect, and it may end up costing you on the other end, and I can't go into the details about it, but this is something that, that I think Herrmann's been very good at educating the building committee about.
True, and I understand, what I, the things I mentioned, though, had nothing to do with cascading anything. There was nothing there that was gonna, except for the geothermal, and that's arguable, whether it really pays itself out, I don't see that it does, but that's the only one that I could see that it could have an effect.
So, I think we should go back to the building committee. Next Tuesday, I think we have a meeting, and we need to look at it, and go step by step, local, and see what we can come up with.
I think, I think what you'll find, and my recommendation to the building committee is, is I think they do look at it, as they always have at every meeting. But the, the concept is, the community needs this school, as it's being presented, and that it's going to help this community in whatever way you'd like to have it expressed. But everyone has a different opinion of that, but most of the people are, this is what we'd like, okay? Jason's position, Andy's position, how do we afford it? If this is what the community wants, how do we afford it?
But, and Tom, and all due respect, I went to those meetings, and that wasn't the, I mean, there was some people there, but that wasn't the community. The community I'm talking to is the person that doesn't wanna tell me, I can't afford higher taxes. They're, they don't wanna go in a public meeting and say, I can't afford higher taxes. So they, they wait and call me aside, and send me an email, and call me and say, you know, I can't afford higher taxes. Those kind of people are not gonna come forward and speak. And those are the ones we have to really think about, too. The, the folks that I saw at those, those community meetings, I don't think was a true 100% representation of what everybody in the city of Auburn wants, or even 50% of what the city of Auburn wants.
I agree with you, I agree with you there.
That's my concern there. So I, I hear that the community wants, I know you guys did a great job, you did your due diligence, we can't make people come when you advertise it, and you have the meeting, and you can't make them come and actually speak. But that doesn't mean they're not out there, and that, and they need to be heard.
Andy?
And they would. And they would on the-
Well, they're hearing from me. I mean, I'm-
They will be heard. They will be heard, because they-
When they vote, but then-
Hope we'll hear what we want to hear. But I think that's the issue, is if you go in with a high number, then what you hear may not be what doesn't allow us to move ahead. I think Andy's right. I think the, the school, building committee does have to reassess-
Right, we do.
You know, what they've put forth and what now they've heard.
I think they will. No question about it.
And it, and actually, I think we should have done it a while ago.
First referendum, again, we look back 50 years ago, first one didn't pass, second one didn't pass. It took the third, and we got what we have. And actually, we didn't get what we have now because we didn't have the gym back then.
Have the gym.
Yeah. I'll say head right now with what we have anyway, but I, I like your idea. I think we need to go back. And I've said it all along that we need to go back. When this wasn't going to fly.
It's an easy way out.
No, it's not.
Well, yeah, honey. Maybe, give me a red pen. I'll cut, I'll cut 5 million off.
They may, they may not come back. They may not come back with-
Easy things to do is to cut line items.
Well, and I understand, Mr. Mayor, but the problem is that the idea of building it and then later deciding how we can save is not the way to go about-
But you do the hard work first, and then you do the easy work. When you can't, when you've exhausted all possible options of the hard work. Hard work, exhausted, can't do it anymore, but you did something. Then you go, and you take that red pen, and you stick, you take your line items out.
But Jason, I think around this table, we're just not going to be able to do that within a budget period.
Well, timing is important, you know.
Timing is important.
People don't, if this elected, if the elected body doesn't think they can do that job, I, I obviously-
But Jason, you have to look at something else, and that is elected bodies change. And so two councils from now may not have that philosophy, and they put it all back, and now we've got a $23 million bond, and we have everything else that was taken out, or everything we did to protect, you know, when you have a changing bond.
We can't, I-
The bond can't be changed. Once it's in there, it's there for 10 years. But we, but budgets can change. We can find different ways to do things. That, that can be changed, but our 20-year budget. That can't be changed once it's done. Once we decide on the amount, it's there for 20 years. But we can't always change budgets. We can always, there'll be new elected bodies coming and going, and they'll be changing some philosophy. But we're asking to do something that's a 20-year commitment for this city.
I do want to say again that I think next week, we're going to have, be better educated about some more numbers, and also the building committee can do some consideration and maybe come up with some ideas. But I, I think we can, we should come back next week with more information.
We're all coming back.
Yeah, we'll be coming back.
We're all coming back next week.
We have a member in the audience. Did Mr. Cooney want to speak at all?
I'm impressed by the discussion. I guess personally, I, I hope we build an exceptional school. I spoke myself. Of course, I voted for payment. I also understand there's a lot of people who, who will be quiet and don't vote their pocketbooks. So we do need to get that balance. I hope that when it's all said and done, every single one of you is a champion for this new school, and we get out there and sell it to all the maysayers, to all the people who say, I want to pay an extra half a, half a mil. This is important. It's not going to solve all our school problems, but I, golly, it's important. So I hope that we, that we all get behind it. And Mr. Tyus, I'm really impressed by some of the questions you've asked at this city council meeting today on my computer from a couple days ago. Don't cut that 1,200-seat auditorium. That's really important to the community, as well as the school. That's real value to the school, but to the community as well as the school.
Appreciate your opinion. Definitely appreciate your opinion.
Very good. All right. I think we'll have more discussion next week. We'll have better numbers. We'll have better information. And adjustments being made, and they're being made daily. As I mentioned at the very beginning, it's a dynamic situation, and I appreciate everyone's comments and concerns, and time invested. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Seat rights, just to put your name on a little brass plate on the back.